All right, good evening. I'd like to call the St. John Board of Stormwater Management Special Meeting for this evening, Wednesday, September 7th at 6:02 PM. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We can all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Joe Gumastego.
Here.
Bill.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Present.
Bob Zanny.
Present.
Joe Wizwadi.
Here.
Bob Vloyce.
Present.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
And Tricia.
Trista Hudson.
Trista Hudson.
Hi. Hi.
Good evening. Okay, we have a couple of sets of meeting minutes, one from July 20th, 2022 meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Like to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, July 20th, minutes are approved. Okay, we also have August 17th, 2022 minutes. Is there a, what's the pleasure of the board for the 17th of August?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion from Bill.
Second.
A second from Joe. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, do we have any old business? Any old business? Saying none, we'll move on to new business. And under new business, we have a consider the stormwater rate study report, rate options that we're going to be discussing. So I believe Trista is going to be having a discussion on that. So welcome, Trista. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for having me. Thank you for meeting this evening. I believe you all have a copy of the rate study report in front of you, right?
Yes.
Okay. The first few pages numbered one through three, I'd like to actually skip over for a moment, explain what the document is, and then talk in some generalities, and then we can come back if we need to. The exhibits that you have attached, starting on numerical page four, Exhibit A is a list by property class code as kept by the Lake County Auditor's Office. That property class code is a statewide system to identify, as you see, kind of generally listed, vacant land, farmland, then industrial are the 300 numbers, commercial are the 400 numbers, residential are the 500 numbers, and the 600s then get into exempt, meaning municipal properties, governments, maybe charities, some of the different things that you see listed there. And then 800 relate all to the utilities and the railroads. This is included for you to see that total number at the bottom, that there are, as best as we can get from the county, 5,967 parcels within the boundaries of the town. The jurisdiction that the Stormwater Department of Stormwater Management, aka the Stormwater District, has is the entire boundary of the town. So all those parcels are included. Numerical page six, Exhibit B, is where we'll probably spend the most time talking tonight, but very quickly, this is a five-year outlook of what the budget categories should, some of them should be and some others could be for you, and I'll distinguish between those a little while later. Numerical page seven, Exhibit C, is a listing of four different proposed options of rates that you could consider. Very possible that you could make up a rate structure of your own. That's fine. These are just simply some example structures for you, and you'll see then in the next page why it relates to the current study, the current evaluation. The monthly fee you'll see is the third column from the right. You'll see that they are different across those different property class categories, but there is some organization to them, meaning industry and commercial will always be listed higher than residential. The biggest reason for that is due to impervious surface, but also pure acreage. Traditionally, an industrial or commercial property is larger, potentially has parking lot surface much different than a residence. Numerical page eight, then Exhibit D, gives you an illustration of how adopting each of those four different options as revenue would correlate to the different budgeted items that we saw in the previous exhibit. So that's a quick preview, but I'd like to talk first about the appendix, those last three pages on your bundle, because understanding what we're looking at there will give you some better basis to then review the rest of the report and start to think about making some decisions. These last three pages were put together by Robinson Engineering, as hired by the town to look at what is needed for MS4 expenses and stormwater. Stormwater is included in the MS4, and at some point, I'll probably let Bob speak up and explain a little bit more, just, I'm not sure how much conversation or background they have so far on the MS4 requirements.
As in the compliance and all that stuff?
Right, yeah.
I did share with everyone, I believe, didn't I send, did I send in general, I did send?
Yeah, you did, Bob. Thank you.
I gave him a little oversight of what all it entails.
Perfect.
They are aware of that.
So in my vernacular, when I say MS4, I'm talking about those IDEM regulations, federal, state, local requirements that Bob is in charge of and needs to comply with on behalf of the town. When I say stormwater, fair or not to the vernacular, I'm talking more about the drainage of the runoff, both off of land and off of the impervious surfaces. And if there's a better way, I should speak of it, Bob, I'm happy to change that.
No, I think that's fine.
But that's how I kind of divide out in my brain the different things that we're talking about. So Robinson went through, in talking with Bob and reviewing the item reports, and put together this first page, this Appendix A1. What they've put together is a proposed budget for one year of operational items, and includes both, both MS4 and stormwater. At the top, you see the total O and M stormwater infrastructure. That's operation and maintenance, just a category really of day-to-day budgetary type items that they suggest need to be spent. You'll see salaries and wages listed there at the $90,000, material supplies, on and down through other. So the reason for including this kind of operational cost or expense in the budget is that if Bob is doing, for example, work specifically on MS4 compliance things, separate from his public works obligations, then stormwater fees should be responsible for that expense, so that revenue should match the expense. Whether there's $90,000 needed in salary in this first year of 2023 or not is for discussion. I'm not suggesting by saying that that it's wrong, I'm just saying that that's their proposal, and there are things that you all will have to talk about and decide as far as what the need is. It is very possible that your need from 2023 to 2024 will change, and that's okay. What we want to get at to start with is what the most basic expenses are that absolutely need to be covered, and then what a good practice of expenses would be, which is probably a little bit higher, and decide from there what a rate is that you're comfortable with recommending and where the town should head. It could be a step-in process. It may be a multi-year thing. Right now, we're looking just at giving that initial rate established so that it can get started, and maybe then revisit a year from now, for example, or two years from now, if we see that operations are running smoothly, but there's more things that should be considered, more expenses to get involved, then maybe that's a time for a rate increase. Again, all of those decisions don't necessarily have to happen in the next two weeks. It can be a step-in process. So below that first green line, you get into the total MS4-related compliance, that large section in the middle, totaling the $224,000. These are all a list of things that Robinson and Bob have identified based on the IDEM report, based on the compliance regulations, that should be completed. Some of them are a one-time compliance issue, other things are repeating, maybe inspection situations, or repeating compliance issues that happen on a quarterly or annually basis. You'll see the notations in the parentheses after, I think, all, most, most all of the lines, on whose responsibility or whose expense it is. For example, the very first one, Town Staff Assistance with Reports and Documentation, kind of self-explanatory, that's a town expense that would come directly out of the town funds to be paid for. Then that next group, the consultant will assist with those items. And as you move down then into that third group, the general MS4 stormwater wetlands, there's kind of a combination of both consultant and town expense. So in the places that you see consultant listed, those are values, those numbers are there, those costs are there, which will be paid to the consultant. So it's still money coming out of the town's budget, preferably stormwater budget, but it's a services and charges kind of fee. You're paying them for that work that they're doing for you, as opposed to paying directly to someone such as Bob on staff. Then that third group at the bottom really relates more to the next page, but that relates, that third group, the other, is where we get into the stormwater drainage infrastructure type items. You can see that total is listed at $930,000. So if we can turn to the second page, please, Appendix A2. What they've listed here for you are, first of all, in A2, equipment-related capital They went through and discussed with Bob and then Bob Davis about the various large pieces of equipment, vehicles typically of various kinds, that MS4 and/or stormwater-related activities would use. The department share in the middle is then an indication of the sharing across departments. So Public Works uses it sometimes, Bob V. will use it sometimes for stormwater-specific or MS4-specific related activities, and it's fair to be able to share that kind of expense across departments, fair and legal. The useful life column then discusses in years how much life that vehicle or piece of equipment should have left in it, because for budgeting purposes, we like to try to, on a five, 10-year, 15-year rolling capital plan, make sure that we're updating pieces as they become the end of their useful life before they start costing more money for repairs, right? And so if we have that in the plan, in the year that we're essentially kind of paying for that year of life when it's not actually being replaced, we're in fact saving that money in the cash balance so that we're building the cash balance until time for replacement. Ideal goal is to be able to pay cash for the piece of equipment when it needs replacement, as opposed to taking out some kind of debt, some kind of loan or lease. That's the best plan, and sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't, but that's why that column is there. And then the last one is just showing you per year the value of the item getting older, the depreciation, right? So they've given us some totals, 825 is the total value of all the equipment, but as we look across to a replacement value of 165, that's being considered in their totals later. The second group for the sewer vac and the camera truck are, I think, both new items. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong.
The sewer vac, we're looking into possibly purchasing one, I believe, and then camera truck, we currently share it with Shererville, so we split the costs.
That's right. Okay, thanks.
Bob, on the, on the last vac truck that we saw, I know they've been looking at a couple, wasn't there a camera already on there that we can?
I don't believe there was a camera on there, no.
No? Joe? On the, on the one that they brought here?
I don't think there was.
There could have been one on that one, but I think the one that Bob Davis is interested in.
The ones that were after that, I don't think there were.
Yeah.
I know that there was on the MacDaddy machine they brought out here.
The first model that we saw?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The Dooley.
I just had one, one question with regards to the sharing of a television truck.
Sure.
Is that, does the town of St. John have that, or is it the town of Shererville?
Shererville has it most of the time.
Shererville, okay.
Yeah, I would say Shererville has it 85% of the time.
Okay.
And then it's, when we need it, we call them, we go get it.
Okay. Thank you.
Probably have more storage space than we do.
Gotcha.
So after evaluating all the numbers on this page, what we're looking at is that 313,000 number at the bottom, right-hand corner, which is what they pulled over onto the previous page to include in a budget. The 313 is what would be needed on an annual basis to build up that cash balance for future replacement, and then invest in these two newer items that are suggested at the bottom.
Bob, is that a normal useful life for this kind of equipment that does the kind of work they do, like vac truck and that? Is that a, is that a governmental standard, like IRS standard or corporate standard, or is that?
I would say our vac truck is from 1993, and it is still.
No, no, I know, I talked to Bob Davis about it.
We keep our vehicles in pretty tip-top shape, and we take pride in that, but, you know, we've had the backhoe for, I'm saying around maybe 10 years, and that's starting to get wore out, and the replacement costs on replacing a boom, and I'd say that timeline's pretty accurate.
No, no, that's, that's what I wanted your professional opinion on, simply because if five years is a little strong, that's just a little bit of savings going forward if it lasts six or seven or eight.
Sure.
To put money aside, as she said, to pay cash for it down the road.
Yes, the five-year time is good, but yeah, we usually keep things long.
That's a conservative approach.
More, more 10, 10 to 15, yeah.
The last page on Appendix A3 sets out one of the other numbers on that earlier budget, which is the actual infrastructure flood control related items. They've been named for the most part until you get toward the bottom. It's a little bit hard, of course, to predict now where the project might arise in 2025, but those are some best estimate numbers for those projects, just based on experience and what they know about the aids of the different infrastructure in town. These top projects are listed based on items that Bob Davis had, had conversation with the prior engineering firm about. He had some estimates, you know, some costs evaluated with them. Robinson has taken those to adjust for inflation and the current price of materials now, which are higher than they used to be. So these numbers, they feel, are pretty solid, of course, unable to predict what concrete will cost tomorrow, but to the best that they can, this is the best estimate they can give you. And so these were identified as the projects listed in 2023, the most emergent ones that were necessary, and I imagine that you all are familiar with, with where those are and what they are for. You notice at the bottom of each year's column that those values fluctuate a little bit, 560,000, 665,000, which is why we come to that five-year average of 592. The averaging of it allows us in the budget then to plan a little bit better. So this first year, if in '23 you were able to complete and pay for all of those projects, you'd end up with 32,000 extra dollars. And the next year, maybe you have some cash balance left over from underspending in some other areas to complete exactly the projects that are listed, or maybe some, you know, across a year and go into '25, for example. But the best way to predict for you expenses that are needed is to make that five-year average. That's a standard operational function of this process. So those three pages are what bring us back to those first five that we skimmed through pretty quickly, those other exhibits. I guess before we get more into the details, does anybody have any questions right now?
The assessor, the total number of parcels that you have there.
Joe.
The, the total number of parcels that you received here, you said you got them from the auditor's office?
That's who keeps the listing, and this is the list that you gave to me.
That I gave to, because, yeah, because I know when I called the auditor's office, they said, "We don't have that number, what you have." And I go, "What number you have?" "We have a smaller number." I go, "Wait a second, you mean to tell me your numbers are different than St. John Township?" And they couldn't quite respond to it. When I got back to them again, I says, "Get back to me," and they didn't. I got back to them again, they couldn't respond to it. So when you said auditor's office.
Okay.
I cautioned that because we got them from the township itself.
Township, okay.
Which is the actual numbers that are in our books for the town of St. John, nothing else but the town of St. John itself. And I'm kind of, right now, looking, putting a microscope in their forehead to get the right answer, because they should be talking to each other.
Well, and they should match.
They should match, and when all of a sudden I got that, you would be surprised. All of a sudden, they start to give me the, I don't know what it was, whether they got nervous that I was going to do some crazy over there. I think Blazak thinks I'm a troublemaker when I start asking questions, but the key here is to ask more questions, and then all of a sudden, before you know it, you get to the right answer. So that's why, when you said that number, I go, "They gave you that number." Thank you very much.
Thanks for clarifying that. And I should follow that by saying, part of what we'll talk about yet still is, if there is a fee decided, whatever it is, it is a suggestion that the billing runs through the property tax bills through the treasurer's office. And again, I'll circle back to that later, but during that process, which happens between now and the end of October, when we have to return to the auditor a listing of the parcels that they say to us are in St. John, we then return to them the fee to attach to those parcels.
Right.
So at that point, it is the list from the auditor's office, and could it be slightly different than the 5967? It could be, based on what they give us, but it should be awful close.
Should be, it should be close enough to me, and that's why I'll be more than happy to work on that, because I, the minute I start hearing numbers that are different between the county and us, then I raise a suspicion, and, you know, gosh, there are administrators and everything, and then when I was in there, I was in that office where they got all the numbers and everything, and they were not matching, and I said, "There's something wrong here. Could you explain that?" And they couldn't explain it. So they said, "We'll get back to you." They didn't. So I just want to make sure that, for the sake of our community, I think our community is basically recognized, it's an affluent community, a community that actually brought about a result of changing the whole entire tax structure in the state, that brought it to a level that's objective. I want to make sure that we don't get the runaround from them, and they start doing some crazy things over there, and they start blaming us for it. So that's why I'm bringing that up. If you don't mind, I just, I'm kind of leery about that, and as an auditor and assistant controller, and as a professor of economics and all this other garbage I do, I just want to make sure that if we're going to do something and the community's aware of it, they know that their backs are covered.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Glad your eyes are on it, Joe.
No.
Trista, I have a question that.
Yes.
Would that include Hanover Township as well, or just St. John Township?
Not township, town.
Town.
Town, specifically, specific town boundaries are where council has jurisdiction.
Right.
AKA, the board has jurisdiction.
I'm glad you brought that up, Bob, because that's the same thing I did, because they started to ask me those, all those various questions. And this will help us, provided we bring the community in for an awareness program, an educational program, letting them know, even if we raise a penny, there's going to be a penny that's going to be raised, that we're going to let them know how it came about, and it's strictly for the town.
Right.
And all this other thing. So thank you, Bob, because I, that, those, that dialogue I did have with the assessor, the township assessor, and the county auditor, so.
So since this is going on the tax bill, when we do, when we do do it, with, with our TIF districts, our huge TIF districts, does this, does that, is that effective in any way?
No, this is a totally separate fee.
Okay.
And it is important to call it a fee and not a tax.
Mm-hmm.
Because it is, it is a fee on the people using the ability of the town to take care of the stormwater issues, whether it be MS4 compliance or whether it be drainage. And I guess because of that, it doesn't affect increase, decrease, anything, any other taxes or fees or increments or anything else that the town does or imposes. This doesn't create any kind of limit on anything else, nor does it by itself be limited by any of them. It is wholly and separately on its own.
And since it's a fee, when, when county collects it for us, we get 100% of it?
You get 100% of what they collect.
Collect, okay.
Right, yep. So will there be some people that don't pay a part or all of their property tax bill? Yes. One thing that we do need to talk about at some point this evening is the different options for what your plan is if someone doesn't pay.
Right.
And I'll, I'll come back and explain what that is. This budget right now, the rate study does anticipate 100% collection, so in that regard, it's a little bit high because it really shouldn't, it really should fall back probably about 95-ish, 98%. St. John typically does collect the vast majority of the property taxes that are billed, but I wanted you to be able to see what the, the full kind of value, I guess, was, and then as you move forward, maybe to consider that slightly less collection rate is important. But part of the county's process for conservancy districts for stormwater is that fees can be added, as long as we follow their billing cycle with the requirements, they will bill for you, they'll collect for you, they'll send a separate check for it back to the town at each of those two times of year, both in June and in December. So when the clerk's office receives it, they'll see that this is a separate stormwater fee, it won't be lumped in with property tax, it won't be lumped in with the excise tax. So the clerk's office will know right away where to deposit it, that it's a separate revenue stream. There is no extra fee from the auditor to the town for doing that. Now, if it comes time to file liens for people that haven't paid, then there are some fees, and we can talk about that as we go.
Bill, President, Mr. President, Bill, I like what he, Bill brought up and what she said. It's not a tax rate or bill, it's a, it's a, actually, you're billing everybody the same amount, and everyone, it's like a user's fee, something we've been looking for, so that regardless of religion, regardless of exemption, they're going to pay for it. So that's a steady, that's a, as far as the technical liens are, that we could work, my experience is that those things are a different issue, but I think with the town of St. John, I haven't seen anybody that's been defaulting. In this case, they might end up not paying that because they don't understand it, but if we, if we... But if we, if we kind of work it out in our education, which I hope you're in here to get the people in tune that this is something that needs, a fee that's going to be put in there that everyone pays.
Right.
So I like your, your question. It wasn't, it's not a tax, it's a fee. It's like a user's fee. I wish water was the same.
Trista, I have a question for you. Do you have a summary of our adjacent communities and what their fee rates are presently, just for reference?
Not every single one, but I have something I can give you. And I'm sorry if you hadn't received it already. Let me see. Two, three, four, five, six. Maybe don't give Joe one, you can have one then.
Yeah.
If you keep Joe's copy, then he's got one somewhere in his email. Thanks, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
So this we had put together early on, and it, it...
Thank you, sir.
It isn't necessarily representative of each surrounding community. It's more a representation of some different current structures across Lake County.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see that some, let me pull up my copy here so I can... Oh, here, I'll look on with Brian.
What's that?
So you'll see that some, Crown Point, let's just walk down, actually, top to bottom. Crown Point, for example, said, "We're not going to mess with trying to evaluate any differences," which is fine, I don't mean that to sound badly, "and just make everybody twelve dollars." It's easy, it's simple. Again, doesn't take into account some of the variations that are important, but that's their choice. What you'll see in Gary and Hammond then is reference to acreage. Originally, and then also down at the very bottom, Cedar Lake and Dyer, the ERU. All four of those are based on an early, I don't know, I guess, structural evaluation of, "Let's charge equivalent to, or appropriate to, the size of the piece of parcel that is in the municipality, in the town and the city." And again, perfectly fine. It makes some sense, right? If it's a larger parcel, if it's ten acres, their fee should be higher than somebody who lives on a quarter acre. Over time, people have realized that while that's very appropriate to that land, it does make things very, very complicated. The GIS system is really good. For whatever reason, when cities and towns, though, are measuring their own parcels, sometimes it's different than what the county says the parcel sizes are. And it just makes it really complicated. So along the way, then, people have discovered that maybe just separating out by property class code, which is what our suggestion is to you, that takes into account some of this different, difference in sizes, difference in impervious surfaces, and we can more efficiently get to the same result of, "Let's charge industrial and commercial parcels a little bit more, residential a little bit less, and still come up in an area that's reasonable for everyone, and does still relate to the use of the property and the size of the property so that it's a fair, a fair fee, a fair contribution." So you'll see that, you know, even comparing Lowell versus Maryville, which do not use acreage, they're just a fee based on property class code, that they have a variation from industrial through commercial through residential. And you'll see that the proposed options for St. John that I've done for you are a similar proportionality across the different categories. It is hard, and I caution you to compare, for example, Maryville, well, they say industrial sixty-three, and the different options we have have it at, you know, fifty, eighty. There are so many other variables at play to get to what these fees are. Number of parcels, for example, number of types of parcels, amount of budget, all, amount of collection. All of those variables play into why their rates are the way they are, and why you have some different suggestions in front of you. So it is good to look at them, it's good to evaluate them, it's just not apples to apples necessarily. It might be an apple to a peach, or an apple to a cranapple or something. So absolutely use it, just know that that's all in the background. Lake Station went much more, I guess, kind of drastic in their characterization. They just did residential, non-residential, and then vacant. So they grouped all of the non-residential together, and that worked for them and their community at the time that they created it, and that's fine. And if St. John wanted to do that, we could. I think it makes more sense, though, to have some of the different categories set out like we have suggested for you.
You know, this brings up a good point with some of the developers coming up with an idea that think it's a lot smaller, and then we have older developer, development that are large lots, we are going to have a swing of usage of that water for stormwater. So we are going to run into a little bit of an average, try to figure out an average for all residential that they're talking about. Probably talk to the developers about, you know, you are bringing more houses into one area that could be using more stormwater. So i- it comes, comes to a little bit of a complex in that area. Does that, that means, and I could understand this is why Cedar Lake did, I mean, Lake Station did, hey, let's just clump them all together.
Yeah.
And also how Crown Point said, "Well, look, let's get the total monies that we have, and then do it across the board." But when it comes to the general public, they're going to match, they're going to say, "Well, my land is smaller than yours, why should I pay?"
Yeah.
That, that, that's it. So we, it's caution to the wind when we start getting into that territory, even when it's a fee, mind you, even when it's a fee. So, you know, as an unpaid individual here, we have to kind of give it a good thought. And I'll be happy to work with the numbers on that. I'm crunching my fingers because I like to, I like what I see, but then again, I have to think about what they're going to start to come out of the woodwork, and you're, you're going to be paying the brunt end of it, please, so I don't want to see anybody in here get bashed.
That can be a difficult question on residential specifically of, "If I have a third of an acre, why am I paying what you pay for two acres?"
Yes, yes, yes.
And it, the right answer is, it's the most efficient way to do it.
Right.
That's not a great, I guess, public answer, right? It's hard, it's hard to explain why.
That, that's, because they'll say, the developers said that, "I don't have to pay." They go, "Wait a second, you're, your whole section is paying, is using the same, more." And that, it's kind of difficult, so we have to look at that.
Yeah.
But you can't, you can't start splitting hairs, Joe. And that's what it, that's what it's going to come down to if you were to try and adopt that kind of, of framework to work in.
Well, it's not...
Because then you're going to have people arguing about, "My got five hundred square feet less than he does."
Hey, you know what, and this is why Crown Point picked this, their approach.
No, no, I'm, I'm looking at that very seriously as an option to just make sure it's fair, as fair can possibly be under the circumstances.
But what I'm saying here, and I agree with you, and I'm just, I'm just prepping myself up so that all of us here can come back to that, that answer to them and saying that what she's saying is correct. It is, I agree. By showing that to the general public, they say, "Well, yeah, you know, they put a lot of thought into it. We shouldn't be splitting hair over all this." But again, it, that, so when we...
Oh, it's going to happen in today's world, absolutely.
But as we grow, as the town grows, and this goes into the planning area.
True, true.
It's going to start, they're going to start to say, the plant, developers are going to say, "Well, we could build more houses here." And the consequences are going to say, "Wait a second, you guys are using more water than..."
Yeah, if you, if you generally categorize it, then it's like, well, you fall into this category, and you fall into this category, and therefore, this is one fee, this is one fee, and we're not going to split hairs about a hundred square feet or two hundred square feet. That's silly.
I've dealt with them.
Oh, I'm sure you have.
I just want to make sure that we're prepared to give them the answer that they may not like, but at the same time, developers that come in front of the planning commission understand that the things that we have to think about, that they don't think about, that they are, they think all this, the end results, "Bill, then I'm out of here."
Well, yeah, here's, here's the rules, follow them.
Right.
I mean, Joe, and to your point, I, I know you're bringing up the developers and everything, I mean, through the board, if that's something you want to look into. I know another town, and I was drawing a blank, but they also put a fee on the developers through the MS four board.
Voila!
There, there is a, a stormwater fee, I believe, to the developers.
What is the, what's that rate, or how much is that?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you, my man.
We're thinking the same, because I said that this morning, too.
What I, what I understand, and we can check with Sergio and get back to you for a more specific answer if, if Joe can't fill in, but that part of the fee is for them during construction, making sure they've got their, the silt, silt traps.
But it's still, babe.
And that kind of compliance, and that fee that, that the developer's paying is covering for the inspections that billing department has to do for those things during that time.
Right.
So this comes in then separately.
Do you know if we have a MS four permit? I know we just started this board, even though it should have been started like fifteen years ago.
Two thousand and three.
Yeah. Is there, is there a permit, a separate permit that when a builder comes in, it, it's specific through this board? Well, obviously, it's not through this board because...
All the SWIP plans got reviewed by Ken Kraus through House Engineering, and, and the permits actually, Schilling and all of them apply through IDM. So as for the town, we have our notice of intent.
Right, but now that we have our own separate board?
Right. I, I actually had a conversation with them at our staff meeting about this, and one of the things is, is that we wanted to talk about with you is, is do we start a non-reverting fund for that permit fee, so that way it's set aside for specifically for, you know, stormwater management purposes.
I mean, at five hundred houses, a pop, a year?
Well, that's just it, right now, when I asked Beth last week, you know, where does that money go, it might have been this week, you know, whenever it was, I asked her. And the answer was, it just goes into the general fund right now. So it's not set aside specifically for stormwater.
Now that the board is created, it's going to be separated.
It could be, and she said it, it could be, but we have to have an ordinance to ordain that.
Maybe that's something we can look into.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that can build our capital every time they, they pull a permit for a house, as opposed to passing it on to, as high a rate to the residents.
Yeah, there's a stormwater fee built in to all the permits.
There is, I think it's fifteen dollars a unit, or a hundred and fifty a unit.
Yeah.
Well, we could find that out, and then at least we could kind of juggle it.
No, it's been going on for years, Joe.
So we've been collecting under the MS four, but with no MS four board?
No, no, it's not been under MS four, because it's, it was set up to originally go into the general fund for whatever it's used for.
So that, what I'm saying is, that fee isn't labeled MS four.
It's not in the, in a segregated fund.
Okay.
Correct.
So there should be no problem with, with adding on something, whatever we decide the rate should be to, to fluffing up those coffers without passing it on in a fee or slash tax or whatever else.
I mean, that would be an additional, let's say, two hundred permits, three hundred, three, or thirty thousand, roughly.
And that's at fifteen bucks.
Yeah. No, that's at, that's at a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty bucks a house.
Hundred and fifty a house, and we got five hundred a year?
Well, I just said two, so.
Right.
You know, if we get four, then, you know, double, it's sixty.
Right.
So.
And that's, at that rate, not, not what...
That's not changing that at all.
We can fluctuate it up, down, whatever we want.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And while that revenue goes into the general fund, the expenses it covers, meaning the cost of the inspection, comes out of the general fund, too. So it is at least in the same place.
Well, now, we're going to trap those funds because of the...
Well, we have to set up, we have to set up the segregation of those.
Right. We have a new ordinance, we get it put in place, and we'll start trapping that money.
And that's good.
Just like the road impact fee. This fund gets this money, period.
And that helps the retention areas. So, you know, it, it, I mean, it trickles down. So what you're bringing up is an excellent process of how the town council sees it, whether they think it's too much for them, what, that's a different story. But I think, you know, you could...
Too much for the developers? Is that what you, is that what you're saying?
No.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that's not what you're saying.
No, no, no way, I don't, I'm not there for them. But I appreciate, this is a great conversation.
If I can direct your attention then back to numerical page six, exhibit B. Hopefully, now that we've gone through what the other exhibits are, you can see how, at least for 2023 as an example, these numbers are flowing back into what the operational expenses would be. So that one hundred ninety-three comes from the top section of Robinson's first page, which were the salaries and operational expenses. The two twenty-four is that big middle section of all the MS four compliance-related things. Then you've got that equipment number that we had looked at earlier, the three thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'll see the actual price listed for the capital improvements of five hundred sixty from that last page. We do suggest, though, and you'll see in the, the next page, that five hundred ninety-two thousand is that five-year average. The twenty-five thousand capital cost is also listed on Robinson's first page at the very bottom. So as you look across from twenty-three through twenty-seven, you'll see that the operational and maintenance expenses do rise a little bit each year, just based on standard inflation, because we do want to try to give you the best predictable budget that we can. The other costs, then, MS four compliance, those do rise a little bit as well. But then the equipment and the capital improvements are based on those specific costs that they had calculated for us on the other two pages.
And here, and here again, you said, which I want to reiterate, "We're putting aside funds to replace the equipment when the useful life runs out, and we have to buy new ones." We've got a little reserve cooking already to cover, so we don't have to write bonds or, you know, raise taxes or any of that incidental expense.
Yes.
Okay.
That is the best practice, to build some of that cash balance up.
Correct.
So you'll see we hover those totals, they hover, eh, one million, three hundred fifty thousand-ish on average. And then back, the next page, on page number seven, exhibit C, that far right-hand column at the bottom of each option gives you the annual total of what we expect on a full collection rate the collections would be. So when starting to think about what, what you believe a fair rate, a fair user fee is, it is absolutely appropriate to keep in mind what the expenses are that you're trying to cover. You may look at the expenses list and find that some things listed are a little bit too high, or that maybe you do want to build some cash, but maybe not quite as much for the capital that is listed. And those can factor in then into which option you think is best for that fee. You can't really evaluate one without the other. It's got to be, got to be a dual hand-in-hand thing.
And basically, you don't want to have to revisit these numbers every year and have a rate increase. You'd like to...
You don't.
Right.
It is appropriate in a year or two to reevaluate and see how we're doing, since it's the first time. But no, on an annual basis, it would not be preferred. So the important note, I think, if you turn to page eight then, where it gives you those options as total revenues across the top that match this page we just saw, and then you've got a listing there of the expenses from the page prior. The very bottom gives you what the result would be. So if you decided with option A to collect six hundred thousand, and if you wanted to try to spend the full amount that's listed here as a budget, you'd be seven hundred forty-two thousand dollars shy. So either you have to give a larger fee, or you reduce the costs, or the third option would be to fill whatever the gap might be with a bond, with that debt, which is not listed here as part of the evaluation for you. I'm just letting you know that if you chose one of these options and wanted to still spend the whole amount, that would be the way that you would fill that hole, that revenue
The best bet is not to get in a revenue hole to start with. The best bet is not to get in a revenue hole to start with.
Yeah, it comes with interest and all sorts of things.
True, true.
I guess as you go back to the first couple pages we skipped right over, you can read those at your leisure. It just explains what the report is, why it's here. You know generally what that, you know, what the purpose is and, and why we're doing this. It sets out a generalized list on page two of the different items that can be covered under these expenses, all the things that you would expect to see for MS4 compliance and stormwater collection and maintenance. And then it explains a little bit on page three, some of the things we've talked about in those bulleted areas about the property class code, the Lake County property tax billing system. And so that will be a good reference for you moving forward, and possibly just hopefully a concise way to answer questions if, if people ask you in the community about it. A couple of things that are not listed in this, but some things for you to consider, are this non-collection matter, if we can circle back to that for a moment. It would be appropriate in this original ordinance that would come forward if, if a fee is decided, to include right off the bat what the consequence is of someone not paying their stormwater fee on their tax bill. The process that the county has in place is that that amount then holds over till the next year, and they will assess a delinquent fee that is then owed, a delinquent penalty that's then owed as well. The following year, then, if the person pays tax bill and that fee, you collect your delinquent amount and the current amount, and you're good to go. There is a process by, by where the town puts together a delinquent list to lean the property if you chose to go that route, which does involve about $50 worth of a fee paid back to the recorder's office, that you would lean the property and have then first rights, if it were to ever sell, to recoup the money prior to whatever other sale events are happening. Another option is simply just to leave it on the bill and hope that they pay it the next time without intervening in any kind of leaning-type process. The state statute also dictates the amount of percentage of delinquency that you can apply, and I'm sorry, I should have looked up what that was before I came. I want to say 3% to 5%. I'll have to double-check that for you. I apologize. I can email it. Another meeting, okay. So that's something to consider as well, what, what you want the response to be if someone doesn't pay. My advice moving forward is twofold. One, because of the projects that have been identified as being necessary from Public Works and from Bob V and the MS4 compliant things, that option D is the direction to look.
D or above?
D as in dog.
Oh, D as in dog, yes.
Because that covers, without having to bond or make any kind of loan, the expenses that are in front of you. If you wanted to go a little bit less, then we look where we can shave a few expenses is really what it would boil down to. More importantly, the other recommendation for today, though, is, this is the first time that you've had a chance to talk about it and start to really dig in. Council is set by advertised public notice to do a same kind of review at their council meeting next week. It's a public hearing. It's been noticed up to the public. My suggestion, then, is for you as a board to reconvene sometime the week after and come up with what your recommendation will be on this fee structure. I can present to you at that time then a resolution that will include what your recommendation is, per values, in writing then for the council to consider it at their meeting the week after, the very end of September, for them to pass whatever ordinance it is that's needed to accomplish what your goals are. So it does give you time next week to hear what kind of public comments there are. It gives you time to investigate, maybe talk with whomever it is that you wish to talk to, council members, members of the public, that kind of thing. Then you can reconvene and discuss in two weeks from now, approximately.
Has this fee been advertised, Joe, or?
The...
I know the agenda doesn't usually come out till the day before, but is this advertised, this fee on there?
Right. The public notice was sent out, the, it advertised the maximum amount. Of course, they could consider a lower amount, but, you know, that was advertised.
But it was advertised?
Yep.
So they'll be going to the town council to see what, to hear this advertisement?
Correct. So they're gonna be doing basically the same presentation that we had here today.
Yeah, I strongly recommend that, oh, the town council.
That's why we get together in two weeks. You will recommend to the town council.
And so after the town council, the public hearing, then we'll come back here, discuss it. You guys make a recommendation on which way you think is best.
And that way, we can pass it by the end of the month, if that's the choice, and we can move on from there to the next stage, because we've got to, what, October 31st?
Is that the deadline, so it can get on the tax bill?
Yeah. I mean, it's...
Yeah, we have to have it to them by the 29th, I think, is the Friday.
Right.
Same thing with the budget.
Right. We want to, well, we want to have it done so that they can, we hit the billing deadline, or we're behind another year, and we don't need that.
No.
I'm 20 years.
It's another year after 20 years.
I'm just saying, after 20 years.
Well, as it is, as it is, the time delay is two years. If we pass it come this year, it'll be billed out the year after, and then it's not collected until two years later, correct.
And, and all I just want to make sure that, you know, in our position here is that the town council, and I have no control over that, informed the general public as to the whole process of this MS4.
That's why there's a meeting next, next...
I think you and I and Bob talked about trying to get the general public informed of what the MS4 was all about, because as it is, I don't care who you have out there in the general public, you raise an inch of a dollar or whatever, then they're gonna come up roaring, and you're gonna have people...
That's what I thought it was, that we're gonna have a public hearing before, and it went to the town council.
There is, the 15.
Right, at the council meeting.
Can we have an educational program set up for the general public so they can know what we're doing? The MS4 is all about, although you, I know you're doing...
That's not gonna happen within the next two weeks, Joe.
No, that's gonna be...
I think that's a goal that we're gonna be working towards, is to...
Right, right.
Get the public on it as we move forward.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Gentlemen, we gotta wrap this up.
Yeah, so I would, I would recommend that if we can get a consensus on the, the time for the special meeting on the 21st, preferably 5 o'clock if everyone's available, because there, there's meetings after that as well.
Correct.
What time is the next meeting? Six?
Seven.
Or seven, okay, yeah. That gives us a little more time, too.
What day, Joe?
Twenty-first.
Two weeks, 21st, 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM?
If that's okay for you guys.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. I'll have Jennifer notice that time.
Tell, tell her thank you very much for being so polite and listening to me.
Joe, isn't there, in looking at my calendar, isn't there a planning commission study meeting?
Oh, no.
For training? That's not the normal planning.
No, that's the 27th, I believe.
Oh, they moved it?
21st. Well, we have a planning commission, but is that the training?
The training.
The training session's at 6:00.
And that's at 6, yeah.
Oh, so we're gonna start at 5:00.
But we're gonna do it 5:00.
5:00.
And it's over there anyway. They moved it over. I thought they put it over there. It don't need to be videotaped. What law does it state there? What's the statute?
All right.
He's right there.
Make a motion to adjourn.